Okay. Seven o'clock, the somewhat on agenda, so get right to it. It is December fifth. Everyone seeing the minutes, the updates, red one. Any changes, edits? Don't you go through the minutes? Definitely, they all a favor. Nameless. Alright, we had four work sessions this week. We had Taco Bell, Ski Company, Pathology and Restoration Pro. Are any for next week, or next session scheduled?
Hey, regarding the work session for Taco Bell. There were a couple follow up, I know follow up action items with the design that in the working room. I, I wanted to just mention that I think we should revisit. Live. Herb Cut, Bridge Street. Again, applicant, I'd like to reconsider if that it should even be in the design. Because I think the circulation on the site would benefit without it and. Knowing that they want to get in front of the board for approval pretty soon. We should maybe have that on the agenda for another work session or some, some comments. Happy to share that it's never been one of them thinking. Kathy never just do.
Yeah.
Just eliminate.
I don't think anybody's. Really big fan of the, for trade entrance.
Yeah, we clean up the whole site.
And we just have plans to make.
So. Yeah, we can get that out so we can take a look and maybe after we take a look at those. I'd say we got another work session.
And what we talked to SKT and TNC.
Yeah.
And they might want like that too.
They can.
I think they didn't, yes.
No, I guess that's a good suggestion. Okay. First up, we had Canalway Commons, building number three. Near.
Tropical Smoothie.
Tropical Smoothie. Anyone?
Yes, this is Roger Wagner with Tropical Smoothie.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, the floor is yours for the next couple of minutes.
Alright, so I've been told, I unfortunately did not attend the first meeting. And um, received the meeting notes and I've subsequently talked, spoken with Eric in the building department. And um, we have a couple different options. That uh, well, there's three different options and we're struggling to figure out how we get the sign to comply. So if we put up revision four. Which would be. The standard tropical smoothie sign. So this sign complies with all the criteria at two foot, four inches. And um, will, will fit, will, will, if we could do this sign, this sign would fit perfectly in the space. And it, it should meet all the criteria. At the last meeting, I was told that you guys wanted a white cloud around the sign. Um, with the white cloud around the sign. In order to have the whole sign lit. It increases the sign height by three inches, so it would be two foot, seven inches. When we move that same cloud sign down to two foot, four inches. The word smoothie then becomes non-lit. And according to your um, ordinances that that can't happen, that the entire sign needs to be lit. The reason it can't be lit is that those letters move down to six inches and they can't fit LED inside the, the word smoothie. So. I'm kind of at a loss and I've talked, and I talked through Eric about, with Eric about this, this, this past week. We've spent hours with the signage company trying to figure out how we make this work. And we kinda, the only solution that we can come up to is with option one, without the white band. That it's at um. Two, two foot, four inches. So my recommendation would be that we eliminate the, the white cloud around the sign in order to have. The sign fit within the, of the signage uh, uh, our, the signage approval. Um. You know, the, the allowable sign. Height and width.
So we've had internal discussions on this one as well. Um. I think when we're looking at the. The Plaza or the Commons as a whole with the, with the multi-tenant sign package. The consistency that's been established with Chick-fil-A and kind of that white background, that cloud as you're calling it. Is the, is the look and the appearance that we're gonna want for the whole site. So. When we look at this. I think what we. We talked about was the two foot four that you're showing here. With the letters would be acceptable. And what we would do is conditionally. Look at the, the, the added inch and a half on each dimension or each top and bottom.
Yes.
To go outside of that side band. So the two foot four and the letters which are all lit up, the back. White would not. Would comply and then we would for this sign only at this point. You know, no more than an inch and a half extension outside that two foot four. To get that side band up.
Okay, that works.
May I, real quick question, just to clarify, the white band uh, in your cross section at the top right, is that flush against, basically against the, the, the wall? Or is it protruded from the face of the building?
I, I believe it is um, protruded from the face of the building.
By.
Which, which way, because I think if you look at it up there in the center of the upper right.
I'm, I'm just wanna verify that it's, it's a surface that's on the, on the wall.
Yeah.
Or just slightly, you know, off versus something that's out forges, yeah, yeah.
So that section of, is actually from the Chick-fil-A sign up there, that side section?
And that shows it as the, I can't read the, the top right corner there, but.
Style that has the background.
And then you see the section in the right. Into the right of, to the, right up against the. The surface, so it does mimic. What Chick-fil-A was doing.
Yeah.
That would work, that works. That's, that's a sign that I can have produced.
And the white, the white is not lit up? Is that correct? I mean, it's not gonna glow white?
No, it's not gonna glow white.
I mean, there were really reasons why I left.
If you're mute, if you're not actively speaking, would you mute this?
Things about my very out.
Um, because there is the indication on the left over there under colors, it has white LEDs.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just the LEDs that go into the letters.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? So. Are you fine with the material that they're presenting in this particular auction?
Yes.
So what I'd like to do is actually, it's not up for approval, but I'd like to. To. Put a motion out there to approve this. It will be, you know. There will be condition because we do have the. Ski Company, which we've kind of been pushing on that one um. But I'd like to see these guys get off and get on and do that, so. If I put a motion to approve this auction, what is this auction here? What number is this? This is revision four?
Yeah, this is, no, this is revision three, I believe.
So, but in the upper right, I see revision one. I'm in the, on the.
I see one down there.
That might be. Is there a, go up to the top of that page?
I'm sorry, you are correct. It is revision three. I just looked at my drawings. I had, I had it written down incorrectly in my notes.
Does that indicate, is that indicated anywhere on this drawing?
I don't think it's on the drawing. I only think it was in the labeling of the um, drawing.
File, yeah. Go back to us, something else. So this is the one here that we will get approved.
So I think we might wanna say it's revision three. And finding that it's in accordance with the multi-tenant sign package and as to this sign only. Um. The, what are the words about the inches?
Well, that, that the, the illuminated letters comply with the two foot four sign requirement. And the backer panel is allowed to extend no greater than inch and a half. For the top and bottom outside of that side band.
So three inches tall. You know, there'd have been how many?
Inch and a half.
Inch and a half.
Almost right. Inch and a half, so.
So there, there is a, a separate file, just to be clear, for the whole multi-tenant sign plan for the Canalway Commons. That did come in as a separate file. Um, because then Tropical Smoothie kind of got brought in after that. So there is another file that we have labeled November eighth. That has the elevations for the site and the Chick-fil-A sign, which is kind of the standard for.
For there's the multi-tenant sign that did.
And before we, before we look at that one, do you wanna look at the, the note that they put in here? If you can expand the red. Red, yeah, just like several can see.
Well, this, that's not the one we're looking at.
Yeah, we're gonna look.
This is, well, this is. This relates to the window signs and the ski company.
This would be part of the multi-tenant sign package.
Part of bringing that into compliance. Is that a condition?
Sorry, I'm losing, I'm losing the, what the, what we're trying to do here.
They have a note on there about how it applies to ski company.
The action is for the multi-tenant sign.
Right.
Right.
Right now.
Yes.
And if this fits into that.
Right.
Okay, so um, are we approving the multi-tenant sign package and, and what is the, what's the date on that?
So that is dated November eighth. And.
But this would be part of.
Yes, it's all part of, it just kinda came in from different people, right applicants were working on it because there's different tenants in it.
With.
But.
So would be hoping to approve the multi-tenant sign package dated November eighth. Uh, with the um, approval of the Tropical Smoothie sign revision three. Presented finding that's in accordance with the multi-tenant sign package. Um, that as the sign uh, uh, only the illuminated letters comply with it. Two point four.
Two foot four.
Two foot four, okay. Sign requirement and uh. The backer panel is allowed to extend no greater than one and a half inches top and bottom.
Non-wood.
Yeah, sound like backer.
I just wanna make sure you're okay with this. Writing in the red.
I can't see it.
It talks about the.
Can you, can you read? It's about ski company.
The attached building signs for Ski Company predate the multi-tenant sign plan and are therefore pre-existing non-conforming. However, all new signage and or proposed changes to the existing signage must comply with town code and the sign guidelines set forth in this multi-tenant sign plan. All existing and proposed window signs for any building on this property requires site plan approval from the plan board.
Just the last line, the town, the town needs to come out. Now, see you tomorrow. Ski Company?
You know?
Not at the moment.
We would add them later.
Yeah.
I guess we would just say um, this approval.
Is conforming to.
Uh, this approval does, does not um. Apply to the Ski Company signs which are still under review.
Yeah.
So um, that note needs to be modified. The note.
Is the Ski Company signage considered at the moment part of enforcement issue and promotion? How else do we confront?
But, but it's being worked out.
Right.
I mean, they're, they're actively working on it. So. Um, the note in red needs to, the first three lines need to be removed.
Can you get us a clean drawing with that top three lines removed?
I certainly can try. It was done by the sign company, so.
I think Dan Pacheco was actually working on that part of it, so I can, I can reach back out to him and have him.
Maybe take him off.
Yep, blue bean white box.
Dan was gonna be here tonight, but he um, broke his nose and had it reset this afternoon and it wasn't a lot of stuff.
So. And then that whole couple of lines about final one ninety-two dash one twenty-two.
Yeah.
The town bill.
Yeah.
You wanna see the other plan though?
Eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven eight sign. So this file identifies the sign band of the other tenants. That was approved in the site plan. And the second page shows Chick-fil-A sign as the standard.
So that's the whole multi-tenant sign.
And it has a note that this multi-tenant sign package includes all buildings on the lot, including Chick-fil-A, Ski Company and Building Three Tropical Smoothie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole multi-tenant sign package consists of how many drawings?
Two drawings. One in three pages total. Two files. Yes.
Do I need to read anything or are we discussing enough to?
I think the, the motion that, that I just read um. With the condition that the note in red needs to be modified to remove the first uh, three lines that's referred to the Ski Company. Um, the multi-tenant sign package consists of two drawings and three pages total. And uh, our usual condition um, that no changes can be made um, without coming to the support.
Yep. Motion to approve. Thanks, all second. All a favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we got Rolex, Stephen Allen.
It's Ray Trotta from Holland Trotta here to speak up. And I also have Vince Ryan from KFA as well.
Um, for the moments, just the updates. Where we stand. What's yours?
Okay, thank you very much. So uh, we, we discussed this one uh, a quick and, and. Pretty heavy detail and I just wanna clarify to the board that we're not looking for site plan approval. Uh, uh, basically of changing the site per se. These were enhancements to the original approval, so I, I know the town has changed their process that, that used to be considered a minor. Uh, uh, minor uh, uh, revision to the site plan, but now it's a full site plan process, so. I just wanna make sure we're, we're just focusing on the entry components of having uh, enhanced landscaping. As well as uh, a basically paving material coming in. And we also added a uh, charging station. Uh, to, to this plan and all of these are enhancements beyond the, obviously landscaping was, is considerably above and beyond. That were uh, that were added to the plan to just make it uh, a more of a uh. Fine shopping, if you will, and upscale appearance. Uh, for Rolex specifically, which is a sub-tenant within the reeds. Uh, basically it's a brand within, within the, the, the reeds uh, space. So the reeds was always gonna be on the corner and, and Rolex is, is always been like a brand within the. Uh, within the reeds and, and they have certain requirements. That when they approve sites and, and locations for reeds jewelers, they, they wanted to. Up the ante, if you will, and, and enhance, enhance the uh, shopping experience, if you. So that being said, uh, I think uh, we just went beyond the site plan there, but. I don't know what we're.
Getting a new one.
Okay, no problem. I'll wait for that to come up.
Wait, 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 I gotta slide the bar.
While, while that's coming up, I was gonna say originally, we were two work sessions ago uh, looking to, I tried to come in for preliminary and final. Approval for this one, which we discussed doing that would not be a heavy lift. Uh, you know, just because the site plan obviously was already approved and we're just making enhancements. Since then, we've gotten uh, you know, from Eric and, and a couple others. We received uh, quite a few uh, just minor comments uh, and clarifications on the plan. And we also were asked to coordinate with the DOT to make sure they have uh, no issues with anything we were doing, which we did with Jeffrey D. And he has no issues, we, we, we shared with him the entire set as well as the SWIP report. He's completely on board with everything we're doing. So the DOT is all set and. If we could go, we good now?
Yeah.
Okay. So basically what we're doing is more or less creating a uh, a curved stone wall at the entry component. Of, of the uh, basically the property line, so. So as, as you guys know that there was a portion of Dewey that uh, is beyond its town property. I was aware that the town was gonna retain the property. I was not aware. That the town wanted to connect the two pieces or, or if you will, the uh, turnabouts to have a connection from the road. So when the comment came back from Eric. Or, are we still clicking here?
Just minimize that whole screen right there.
Yeah. There we go.
There we go. Okay, so if you look to, this isn't the.
That's the old one.
Yeah, that's the old one.
Okay.
If, if you look to, I, I, I would say to the left of your plan on L three when the new one comes up. Uh, basically, we put a connection point for the residents and a stone path. Because we actually, that's our property, so a, and when I say our, I'm saying that our client that we represent is, you can see to the left right there. So we were, we were working within the parameters that I thought we had control of. So some of the comments, I talked to Eric today, because there was some last minute comments that came in is. I, I'm completely fine with us connecting those two turnabouts. Uh, uh, you know, with a walking path, that's fine. Uh, we just have to have permission from the town, a letter from Rocco or, you know, highway department or from the town board. That says we can, you know, work within those parameters of the property. We knew we were, you know, basically working within it before. So the, the idea in that case would be to use the sub-base of the roadway that's already there and then put a. You know, a, a, a walking path above that with new material, so, so it basically connects the two. We are down to a couple of the comments, just that uh, the easements have already been drafted up. But that's uh, basically on town property, so the town would have to uh, would have to file those easements uh, on their property, but we, we already shared those like a year ago. Of all, all the easements, the uh, the lights that were questioned, that there were floodlights. On the, I would say, side is that Vince? I'm looking for the North Arrow on there. I, I, I'm basically.
On the north side of the building.
On the north side of the building. Uh. There was some floodlight shown originally and that was actually from the light vendor. We took, we got rid of those, so we know they're not in compliance with the town standards. And we've removed those from the plan. Those have already been taken off. The only thing that was shown is when we, when we had the cut sheets. The lighting vendor left them in. It wasn't part of the foot candles or anything like that. They just accidentally left the floodlights in there, so on our plan they're off. And as well as uh. Yeah, so there, there is nothing on there as well. And the other thing I wanted to clarify. We're only looking for the wall and the paving right now. Uh, we're not, uh, the signage would be a separate application. That's why we're trying, we're trying to uh. Get this approved, so we can move forward and, and obviously this is a huge benefit to the town. I mean, it's already been approved with. Very nice landscaping, but we want the extra effort to have uh, just as a clarification, it's gonna be stamped concrete. We, we, we were researching and the uh. If work session of stamped asphalt, they decided to do stamped concrete. They're more familiar with it and whatnot, so I, I did get that answer. As far as the one thing I, I would request is that. The exact color of the concrete and the stamping of the, the pavers. We just like to make that a condition of the building inspector. Uh, approves that prior to construction, because they keep on changing them all the time of the exact col- colors, so. When we're doing it in spring, it could be, you know, it could be a, a little bit different material and I, I'd feel more comfortable.
Are you gonna do like a colored concrete or just straight run-of-the-mill concrete?
Yes, it's, it's gonna be a color of uh, more, I believe Vince, it's, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's more of a grayish color at the border and a tannish color. In the inside, so tannish to brick color. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're waiting on approval for the colors in terms of it's gonna be a, a dark gray, gray on the border and then as. Uh, Ray said a tan in the, in the, the middle there of the driveway.
So more of a brick look, brick or, or if you will, earth toned stone look in the center and the outside is gonna be a, you know, a gray border of a. More of a limestone stone or darker stone color on it. The stone itself, as far as on the wall, that will match the building that has already been submitted, so they'd be exact same stone, so that. So the stone that's on the facade, the stone that's on the stone wall will be the same stone.
So Eric, you guys need to get a clean and finish your arm. With all of the stuff that's on there. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be hard to, to look and approve colors for the concrete, because you don't have them.
I mean, we could, we could give you like idea of the color, but we won't know the exact until, you know, it goes into constructions, you know, probably. I, I, by the time you get to the pavers, it's gonna be spring and that's why I just wanna, if you wanna have it in the discussion at the town.
Get a, a standard or something that's very similar.
Yeah, we could do that. We could definitely do it.
I mean, that's. Maybe just be the best we can get.
Yeah, they just, they just never lock into them, unfortunately.
Is there a stamp pattern to this that you can provide?
Uh, the actual stamp pattern, I'm not sure if they've determined that exactly yet. Vince, can you clarify on that? If it's gonna be a running bond or?
Uh, right now in the plan, we have a ashlar and then a running bond on the uh, on the, the. Uh, for the paint lines of where those parking spots are. Brick uh, herringbone for where the parking spaces are. Um, and then basically a typical five-foot score line for the. Uh, border of the driveway. It's a three-foot border around that whole driveway edge. Um, that'll be a typical score, concrete pattern and then that ashlar pattern on the inside.
Can you, on the updated drawings? Add those annotations?
Uh, they're, they're annotated on the layout plan, but I, I guess I, I can provide more detail.
Please.
The only, the only thing we probably could lock into exactly, because it depends on their patterns, is the exact size of it. So it could give you a relative idea of what it looks like, but you know, whether it's five inch or ten inch, I, I, I'm not gonna know.
Right. Just go to the last page really.
Uh, the maintenance strip for the EV charger, I know we talked about that a little bit. Uh, is that going to be stone mulch or you said it kinda ties into the?
No, that's part of the stormwater facility. Again, this was a, it's a standard detail for us. Uh, you know, there was a holdover. We'll, we'll remove that on the next set of plans. There's no, there's no maintenance strip. It's, it's just going in a grass area and it's gonna be built on a concrete block.
Okay. Uh, and then I, you guys might have said this earlier, but cut sheets for the pilaster lighting? Were those available to you or?
Uh.
I thought they were in the package. I'm pretty sure.
They're just top, there's nothing on the, the wall. It's on the top of the wall.
Yeah, it's just on the top, as you can see it right in that detail. And I believe. And I believe the cut sheet was included and they, the overall, there was a, there was a whole stack of cut sheets that was at.
There's a, if you scroll down on that page, there's the light there for you in the bottom right.
I don't recall seeing it in the package of cut sheets, but.
So that's like a store bought. The photometric guy doesn't have that light, so he modeled it as closely as he could with what. His, you know, vending package is, so that's what's reflected on the photometric plan.
I thought I remember hearing something like that.
Yeah.
So. Anything else? No, we talked about the the tree heights a little bit, the caliper should be two and a half inches. Uh, but I I sent all that bulleted list out to everyone over back today, so.
So if you can update this package. We'll have you back in two weeks, so we'll get this wrapped up.
Could, could I request that we, uh, I get a vote on just preliminary approval? Uh, pending that we address those comments that were circulated to everyone, and then we'll do final. Uh, in December, does that, I mean, I'm sorry, January, apologies.
So Ray and I talked about doing it the first meeting in January. If if it seems like we could get this all together in two weeks, then.
I mean, it's it's up to them to to get that updated. We can get that updated. I think we can take care of it at that point.
We could take care of it at the next meeting if it's updated.
Yeah, would that work for you, Ray?
Yeah, I was, I was just hoping, I just wanna make sure that, you know, to come back to my client to just say that. It's preliminary approved pending that we're addressing the comments that Eric had and we discussed.
Yeah, I would, I don't know that we'll do preliminary approval. We'll do the the full approval in two weeks, but I think. You've got the goal of the list, you've got the comments here.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I didn't know.
Really gonna be anything holding it up beyond that, so get those addressed.
Yeah, and I just figured, I figured to be realistic, if something came up in December. We might as well just push it punt to the first week in January that, you know, just.
I'll leave that to you. We can, if you can get it to us in two weeks and you wanna get it done and over with, get it to us and. We'll deal with it. If you wanna go to the first one in January, we can do that too.
If we wanna do the one in December, we need it next week. We can't.
Right. Yeah, that's why I feel more, let let's just push it to January, just so it works out for everybody, because I don't wanna put Vince under the gun too.
Okay. We will see at the first meeting in January then.
Perfect. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to bother you, but I wanted to see if it was okay. Do I need a permit for my sleigh? Well, we have the new, we have the new, uh, Santa workshop out there that they did a wonderful job on, so, you know.
That needs to come to us.
I'll make sure that we put in the proper paperwork for you. Thank you for allowing us to just come in from home. Just wanted to wish you a wonderful, safe holiday season and Merry Christmas to one and all. And I will let you back to your work. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Christian from Company Refilling Associates, representing, uh, Josh Podkamener and the CrossFit Park Project. As you know, we have the two buildings, it's amusement work, um, some lawn adjustments, things like that, so those plans are. Uh, have been approved, are under construction. Um, I think we got to. Seating and sodding on the construction, so it's looking really, really nice. The area we're looking at is this building. Cue next sheet, please. Thank you. So now we're zoomed in there and, uh, what we have here are ten. EV stations, um, and what these are are single pole mounted EVs. And, um, Rivian requested we do, uh. Accessible EV charging station as well, so, um, we're doing kind of two for one. These are charging stations that can be used. Um, by one and all, but they're also kind of showcasing Rivian's capabilities and the. The, uh, post is per the Rivian spec and everything like that. So what we've shown on the plans before we knew exactly what was gonna be required as far as the electrical. Kind of capabilities, the gauge of the wire, things like that. We showed a pad here. Um, and then we said kind of to be thought through and worked out when we get there. Um, well, here we are, we're there. So what we've determined is that transformer for the EV chargers, number one, is very small. And it's my understanding now that it may be underground. And it may not need to be above ground transformer for the EVs.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Josh Podkamener, nice to see you again. Um, in in chatting with Ruby, and we had thought at one time that there was going to be an an exterior transformer. They confirmed that's not the case. They refer to these as level two chargers. And so what we did in advance. Um, the electrical, it's not shown, but the electrical panels are on the other side of the building. We have conduits running over to this corner. Uh, and then we have conduits and a core drilling under that hole to a hand hole outside, so there's no transformer pad required. Existing hand hole in place, and that would be your feed running east into whatever. Well, wha- whatever's a maintenance strip or whatever's agreed upon, so everything would stay underground and build out.
Yep, and this is sort of where KFA twice two projects is sort of, uh, looking at the town to. Um, just I guess include exactly what we're looking for for materials. So in other towns. We've done, um, sort of a crushed stone. If there's a sidewalk, we've done concrete. What that does is it makes the sidewalk super wide. But you don't wanna have the nose of your car hitting the posts. And you definitely don't want the posts on the other side, because then you'll just have people walking over course and charging vehicles, so you want it to go. Curve, two foot, two foot six post, then a five foot walk, so it's pretty meaty slab of concrete if you do it that way. Since there's no sidewalk here, we're a little more flexible. Um, having discussed it with Josh briefly, we're not super excited about doing anything with lawn to post. Just because you get the maintenance guys in there to weed whacking, things like that, damaging the posts. Um, what we literally talked about briefly was an option of doing a crushed stone in like a riverstone. Um, but I guess we're open to discussion with the town on what is exactly required for surfacing between pavement edge. And EV chargers.
Yeah, so we don't do a stone mulch.
Okay.
So what other options do you have?
So the 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 better, maybe the the high end option would be just kind of create the whole thing. And then maybe a lower end option would be a stone option, but instead of doing like gravel, which always kind of looks unfinished, I know. No one in the town is really excited about that. I'm not either. You could do maybe a piece stone or washed riverstone that has that brownish reddish color. Looks a little more finished, a little more high end. So we'll do the two options I would propose as options.
Now, we're not opposing anything. With general thinking, when we went through the whole process a while back. Originally, the tenant was hoping to have the EV chargers here. We just thought that was really gonna crop up the whole site and. As I've traveled other markets, I see the wires out and and I'm thinking shoveling and snow plowing, and so it was really my request. To put them on the north side and protect it by curve, whatever that that strip looks like. I think we're all kind of learning at the same time here. But from what I've seen, it's. Some of these, um, wires droop a little farther than others, but we just didn't want weed whacking and mowing around all these pedestals, so we thought of. A larger rounded stone would look good, but like like Christian said, I think we're we're open to ideas and we'll run it by David Darlington and me, Ray from Rivian. In terms of what you guys would like to see there, that would be a, you know, kind of a long term. Easy maintenance.
So, uh, you said these are open source level two? It doesn't require, it's not a Rivian only charging station. Is that true?
Yeah, is the plug out?
Well, I I I don't know that the answer to that question, I know it was level two, but maybe David or or me, Ray, who's on could could speak to that. I don't know the specifics about that.
Hey, guys. Dave Darlington, I'm a construction project lead with Rivian. So, yeah, the the chargers themselves are proprietary to Rivian. We. We manufacture those and, um, you know, they're part of our build outs for our customer, intended for our customer facing. Um. Uh, folks, it's, they're not, they're not credit card driven or anything like that. There's no.
And no on them.
I'm sorry.
There's no transaction.
No, no, there is none. No.
And. If it's, and forgive me, it's the the Rivian chargers are associated with. It's a Rivian, uh, business, like that's, this is the.
That's the make, yeah, yeah.
That that's the only tenant. It's a single tenant building leased to me.
We have, actually, it's almost. That. My opinion is that. Charging stations that are proprietary to one car. Should not be, um. Uh, displacing required parking spaces. However, in this case, since it's a Rivian business, it makes sense, right? But I just. Yeah, no, I agree with that statement. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
There there was a question about maintenance and I heard, uh, you know, uh, river rock or. Something decorative rock versus concrete. I I mean, I can tell you just from a maintenance standpoint, I think. If we're going to be trenching and displacing, you know, creating a trench and essentially backfilling it, I mean, I think from a long term maintenance standpoint, Rivian would probably prefer. Concrete.
I'd be asking you to look at a patterning technique on that concrete to define those zones, just like we had listened to the just prior.
Yes, yeah.
So. Going back to the to the plan, so it sounds like you'll you'll add concrete beneath all those chargers.
Yep.
The, there's no transformer that should have been there.
That will be gone, yes.
The pad to the left.
Yes, that's existing. Those are HVAC units, and that was on the previous plan as this might be HVAC units and surprised it is, so.
Okay, and so we wanna talk about screening on those, is that what? I believe I had mentioned that.
Yeah, Eric did mention that and and I. I I kinda ask what we're always screening from, because there's. It's it's behind, it was intended to be behind the building, so it's on the north side of the building.
Their parking lot on the street.
And then it's, it's all kind of.
Yeah, I mean, there's a swale, as it drops off to a swale that picks it up, and after that, it's all a basic vacant land with with a lot of greenery, and there is some. Some plantings there that we've already put around it, but if you go into the main parking lot, you can't see that at all.
Yeah.
You'd have to kind of stick your head around the corner. I don't even know if they'll come up on any of these.
On the front of the vehicle, so you pull in.
Yeah.
Forward.
David, is the Rivian charging on the front in the vehicles? Is that standard?
Correct, it's on the front driver's side.
And so this is, this is the parcel here. Obviously, you can see this was pretty early on when we were still pouring the foundations, but. Um, this is the truck court, which is the shared truck court that we all worked on together with the the shared easement in this area with building A. Um, uh, we did, um, you guys may remember closely that we had the the truck, the turnaround area, that's complete. It's done, that's complete. That's basically right in here. You would pull in, the parking lot is in here with stormwater over there. There's the matchup, and so the HVAC is up here, so you have to kind of come. And look around the corner to even see it, but those charges would run, uh, east, west, along the north side of the parking lot.
The backside there, yeah. So. It's fairly simple. Can you get those? Clean up quickly?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Concrete scoring, you got it? Yeah. Transformer and the pads, that little, that little knob on the pad will be gone too. Yep, and those plants will be moved back because we're showing them as relocated, but I think they can re- remain the way they are.
Yeah, ju- just so there's no confusion when we come back in this time, and we'll we'll look at the dimensions of those pedestals. Uh, but is, I mean. Is there any margin that you have in mind in terms of what that that size of the stone strip? Uh, can we just look quickly at the cut sheet, please? No, I'm not sure. I'm sorry, concrete strip, yeah, when we know that, like I said, there's a pattern there, but. I mean, you know. Do you have a, just a a base, um?
I think it's a matter of how far wheelbase is overhang on the.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking about the charging, because if it's a front charger. And you're pulling into the spot, how important is it that there's much of a mobile stop?
Well, there's all curve, that whole, there's a.
Exactly. Locate that charger so far.
We went two foot six, which we feel is appropriate, so the whole strip is three foot six. So it goes two foot six post, and then there's just a little meat on the back.
Right, yeah.
Give me something to hang.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, you gotta turn around next week? Yes.
There is.
Yeah, I mean. At this point, if it meets all those requirements, we're just kind of like.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is John Zent with Nacirella Consulting. I'm here with my colleague tonight, Matthew Nacirella. And as well as we are representing Rocker Tractor with O N X. Um, previously come to planning board with the projects, it's the proposed three hundred and sixty thousand square foot warehouse. At the sixty four hundred new year, uh, new venture year drive, oh, industrial park. Uh, last time we were on the board, we brought up concerns of screening off the fly road. Uh, which we've gone back, we've provided an earthen burn with some spray trees, provided his air. Um, additionally, we've gone back, we've adjusted some of our stormwater, uh, management. About this bio trend, bio retention filter and a wet pond to deal with the volume and quality. Largely, the layout hasn't changed much from the last time we were in front of planning board.
Bear with me, it just wants to do what it wants to do.
Just kind of quickly to go over this side of the.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
And sort of find the end zone of this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And do we have the building elevations with us?
I believe, yes, they were submitted with the rest of the files at the. Architectural lands here. I don't believe these have changed from the last time. Uh, we submitted.
It's been a while, so.
Oh, yeah, just a revisit of everything. And so we provided that earthen burn with a tree screening along Fly Road, kind of hide some of that rooftop mounted equipment.
Yeah, there's some of the trees. Which has to fly road elevation.
Fly road elevation is going to be.
Top rate. Top rate. And the element to the right there from the online, we have a bird is the height of that roof, but same height as the of the structure that's there now. Right?
Uh, Robert, do you know?
What's that?
Uh, with the, uh, the lower portion of the smaller area, uh, smaller section, is that the same roof height as the neighboring building?
The 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 entire, the the. Building is is actually taller than the neighboring building. The neighboring building, are we talking about like the old spirit in San Zone? Is that where we're going? Am I going in the right direction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Spirit that Spirit Sand Zone sits down. Sits, that building sits down in a hole.
And is that top roof elevation?
Our our ground, our our property elevation is. Uh, as our property elevation is probably ten feet higher than Spirit and Sand Zone. It's like an earth, an earth burn.
Hold on one second. We're looking at the elevation in the upper right. On this one. You've got from cobble line eleven to fourteen, that's a new.
Okay, got you, got you.
That that roof line matches up to the existing building, the old spirit in San Zone.
That's correct. The entire building, right, correct.
Yep, that's what I'm here.
Yeah, and then that taller part matches.
Far end, yeah, yeah.
That that part down there.
That's what we're talking about.
Any other review comments? In terms of. The site, truck circulation. Parking requirements, any variances that are needed? Completely not yet from me, I didn't get too far into this.
Because I know you were doing something on the backside of it to allow them to come up to the property line on the south, on the south side.
I'm, I'm sorry, repeat your question.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to remember everything here, because this building fills in. From the south, the sand zones building down in the property line, and you were doing something on the backside to resolve the parking and then the. Drive lanes and the truck traffic and.
Yes, so.
A whole bunch of junk along the south side of the old building there that we saw.
Yeah, so this will all be cleaned up, this is kind of where that concrete pad that exists right now.
Yep, right in there.
Sits, um, so that's all going to get cleaned up, providing some extra parking spaces here, um, just for the entrance to the office areas. The primary, uh, parking is going to be. Uh, just to the northwest of the building, these sixty-four spots. And then we've got overflow, uh, over here for another hundred and twelve parking spots.
Primary access coming, coming in off Fly, I think it.
So off of Fly Road, that would primarily be for, um. Employees, not necessarily for truck circulation.
So I'm looking at the parking in the back, how does somebody get to the parking in the back? Where are they coming from?
So, uh, there is the northern entrance to the actual industrial site. At the northwest corner of the site. So they would be coming down this direction, there's also this loop road here. Um, that kind of breaks off. Blue, we have, um, you can go to the sheet below the layout.
So if you go out there, if you go back to that colored photo.
It, it'll suddenly bounce.
There we go. The bar on the right moves. We use that one.
It does, it does, it does better.
So if you go out to the site and, and you see how they operate the site. That, that long road coming down from above there, that access road. Um, you can jump in and out.
Yeah.
They, they basically use that as a holding pen. For truck traffic that comes in. So, um, it doesn't block up the burn dairy spots and, um. The, uh, the, the other buildings out there, so there's a holding pen and. You, you get queued in, backed through that way, so all the truck traffic comes in through that long access road now, because. You know, just, just operating that, if you look at that small parking area where the loading docks are. It just wasn't feasible to have them parking, that's right. I think one of the last times.
But we don't get it, we really, we really don't get a, a, any truck traffic down the FedEx side of the building. Very, 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 very minimal truck and tha- and they, most of them stop. At the waste tree plant, you know, less than halfway back and they don't, and, and, and they, you know, turn around and head back out. So the only, really, the only, the only traffic that we get on the perimeter road is, is, is vehicular traffic for circulation.
And the other thing is, inside the campus. Maybe Robert can talk about that. Uh, when you go out there and you look at how this operates, but it's really overparked interior to the campus, inside the buildings. Um, just from my observations, when I was out there looking at things.
So part, part of the program.
And then, and then the last thing is, you know, the last, the last time we were in here, uh, several months ago. Remember, we, we looked at the, the Google Street.
Yeah.
Right, we talked about.
Yep.
This building would, would off. And would hide a lot of the truck traffic.
Right.
Right? Because it was a really high building.
Yep.
Right, so.
So kind of to back up a little bit, part of our challenge here with this. Campus and with what Robert has been doing the last five to eight years to. Revitalize the old adventure gear site. The challenge has been all the traffic was coming in off the main gate and kind of intermingling with everything that's happening here, trucks. Uh, employee vehicles. The, the programming and what's occurred over the last two years is to get this ring road access and kind of push some of that traffic, and now that we've got this new proposed. Five hundred suite. That allows us, uh, to kind of keep that ring road access and to, to the question here of, you know, wh- where is the access coming for this overflow parking area? And frankly, even the, the immediate sixty-four spaces for that employee parking area is, our hope would be instead of that traffic coming in through the former main gate. That we would force that traffic in through Chrysler Drive. And, and, and kind of help that circulation and help that internal site, especially for this new proposed site building. Um, the, the access and the whole plan for Fly Road access was. Fire service access, um, there was no other opportunities to gain access off of Fly Road due to site grades and conditions. This is really our only opportunity to do that, and certainly we have to go to, uh, county DLT to finalize that access point, but. Um, it provides that fire emergency service access and then certainly only, uh. I'm sorry, use the government term of POV vehicles, but pedestrian vehicles, but we don't want no trucks coming that way, so. That's the plan of, of this, and, uh, you know, how do I do, Robert? That, that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, uh, let me just add one thing about that, uh, about DOT on that point of access. Um, recently, we acquired, uh. The, what's, uh, owned now by Onyx, one south of thirty, thirty-two overall acres, um, adjacent off of Chrysler Drive that, you know, butts the southwest corner of the property. And that was two tax parcels. Um, one tax parcel. Uh, uh, from there, that wooded lot feeds, uh, feeds into, you know, off of Chrysler, their access point is off of Chrysler on the north. But then the back lot, that's hidden lot, um, it actually has a legal right of way. For access to Fly Road on what we're showing here is the proposed drive. So that's, uh, that is actually an approved corridor under somebody's guidelines for egress. Uh, designed for, you know, I, for the, for the parent parcel perhaps, but really also is a legal point of access for that. For that, as a flag, flag property for that. Five or seven acres, the tax parcel that's in the ex- in the extreme southwest corner of this property. I don't, I, I, I think the rights to use that are, are. A shallow dig to get to, if I, I'm, don't know what the terminology is, but. Um, but I think it's un- I think, I think that that, that that access is kind of understood, I think it should be controlled so that the traffic only turns. One direction and that people don't cross over, but you do have a good line of sight up there in terms of being able to see traffic in both directions.
I mean, it's got the technology placed right across, I think, with the turning lane and everything.
Yeah.
Just thirty feet away, so.
Yeah, just, just further for us.
Yeah. Yeah, resolve that greater lies coming off that. No, it's always a challenge.
Is this saying?
And I mean, we'd be, we'd be amenable to, to, to a right turn only signage there, I mean, we, I don't know how do we enforce it, but we certainly can. You know, try to emphasize right turn only, just for, as an added safety precaution.
Is this site still pretty well, uh, screened from that residential neighborhood?
Oh, very well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a sample.
Where does this? Put the site on building coverage?
It was on the plan, I think it was just under eighty percent, it's like seventy-five.
We'll leave those covered on our zoning checklist, the next page up.
Like you said, we're zoning, we're real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So coverage is.
Eighty-sixty.
Eighty, man.
Well, that's what I was just wondering, is, I think we're, we're closing in on the.
We're closing in, but we're still under.
We're, we're also, we're also very amenable to, um, removing asphalt and replacing it with grass, we've al- we've already done that in. Some, I, you know, isolated, small, small locations, just to try to help beautify the, the property a little bit, dress it up a little bit, but. We're ver- you know, very, we're very happy to, to make that exchange, um, you know, if, if we could take the stress of parking away.
I'd kind of like to see more of the street trees and the Fly Road, uh, improvements, the landscaping, continue the entire length of buildings, it looked like from the drawings, it's just in front of the. I, I would rather see that.
It was, it was, it was close to a street trees and then.
It should, yeah.
I think we talked about that, Doc, we talked about that a couple of years ago, didn't we? Yeah.
Yep. Here we go, right page, uh.
Yeah, we're trying.
Thanks. We need to figure it out.
Part of our issue is, the FedEx building was sold off, so we don't have control of the FedEx property.
Really have.
So we can go to our limits, we're, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot to be said for taking those trees.
Right.
All the way down.
All the way down to the limit of your property.
Certainly.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. I love trees.
And, uh, we rent seventy-five percent of the lot.
How's the numbers speak when you get the other parcel on the back, or you got the other parcels?
It does not take the other parcel.
Well, and that kind of goes into Robert's deals with the land acquisition and separate parcels and everything, so I think currently. The proposal is not to combine that, uh, that new parcel with this parcel for his, uh. Business deals with regards to the. Now, it was kind of a conversation a year ago that he talks about.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's right, the, the, the five, five or six acre parcel, we have an ongoing discussion with the town. With regards to, um, you know, some global, um, stormwater enhancements going forward. Um, with these next stages of development, um. You know, and how we use some of that property to solve some local problems in the, in those neighborhoods, um. Uh, you know, and try to work that into what we're do- what we're going to do with that, with that overall parcel, but.
Yeah, that's, that's spot on, we, we, we've had some discussions. With, with Robert, um, in the Dunroken neighborhood. Um, along Wimbridge, Kerwood. Hillden, you know, to the extent possible that we could, um. Do some work there for stormwater activities. There's a, there's a huge ditch there that we've always. Tried to maximize what goes on in that neighborhood, so.
Well, yeah.
Right, that's. That's a big plus, I mean, before Robert purchased this, the town had looked at purchasing the property for that, for that same reason, so, um. Okay, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't spoken in a few months, but I know, uh, earlier in the year, Robert, you know. Contacted us a couple of times and we had some. Some good conversations about that, so.
To get that cleaned up and they can, and maintain good screening to the. The, uh, Wimbridge, Kerwood. Where it is too, and.
Yep.
Yeah. I'd love to see a tran- trade-off, uh, asphalt for. Re- even in your center corridor, I just want to clean up all that circulation in there and make it look like a, at the backyard of an old. Industrial plant, you know, they turned it into a. A real.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that, we've, we've done our best to try to maintain what we have, to try to maintain the. You know, the compliance with the, with the parking counts, so I, I don't know how we address that going forward. After this build, but I'm, you know, as, as we do go forward and continue to develop with that stormwater project and the residential. Mixed-use project that we're in discussions with on, for that adjacent property, I, I would. Very much like to look at. The global imagery of this property to see where we can remove some asphalt going forward.
So, Mark, our engineer, will have, you know, he'll do the art, it's full review. And then Eric can, hold on, his office will do their review, we'll give you some comments.
Alright.
There.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Alright, next up, we have Northwood Business Market. Lots of old assets. Looking up on the wall. Zone change survey. Yeah. That's it. So I presented this last time, you want me to go over this?
What's your name?
I'm thinking about that, I've been working in the town. It's maybe my last, that's okay, it's time, um. Do you want me to go over this, Columnar Road, it's three acres. On, uh, Columnar Road, it's. Um, right now, it's on business transitional. I'm sorry, some industrial, our proposal is to make it business transitional. And there's a, an acre right here in the back that we're proposing to go from business transitional to industrial. This parcel right here is about. Four or five acres, it's a forty thousand square foot, uh, light office warehouse building. It's, uh, got very low ceilings, tall foot ceilings, not heavy industrial. But we wanted to continue this same. Uh, project into this one area to keep the consistency there, because surrounding this is all, uh. Uh, industrial property, if you use first. Storage and, uh, heavy equipment. Uh, this right here has been developed to, uh, was a former restaurant and winery, it's now three. Three, uh, apartments, compounds, or contiguous. And, um, they're all leased right now, so I figured that I'd like to. Continue the concept of residential. And that would require a business transitional zone. And this would be three acres, um. Maybe have an opportunity to build twenty four minutes. And there would be. Um, apartment. Okay, that's my story. Sticking to it. Okay. Um, so we've talked about this one as well. Both with you and internally. Um, we waved. I mean, go back to the, the process itself here, so we'll talk about this. Ultimately, it's going to require a recommendation from this board to the town board for any sort of a zone change.
Yes.
It's not something that the town or our board takes lightly in terms of making any adjustments with zoning. Yeah, rarely happens.
Has, it's a long time.
Uh.
We need an application for it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, there, there's no piece of paper that you can.
We're done, yeah, they pulled them together.
Oh, yeah, perfect. Um, so when we looked at this, we looked, you know, we've had extensive discussions. Here. Um, at the surrounding neighborhoods, the, the properties that are there, the purpose of the business transitional, um. What this kind of area is becoming.
Yeah.
In here, um. I'll start the conversation by saying, I think. We appreciate the business transitional up front. Along Columnar in there. The transition from business transitional to industrial in the rear is less likely. We don't think we're going to support that, because the business transitional really is the buffer between the industrial corridor. Uh, along northern and the rest of the neighborhoods to the east. On that side. So by extending the industrial back towards those neighborhoods. We're less likely to recommend. I thought that was, isn't that, um. Isn't this industrial land right here? No.
Business transition.
Business transition.
Oh, that's business transition, what about in that?
Business transition.
Isn't it really, I think that would be.
Yeah, it's got full junk back there right now.
Absolutely, and this right here is.
Same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, this is all, uh. But it's all business transition.
We just heard about a new project on that lot today, so. Might not be.
Oh, there's a new project going there? Can you divulge the kind of a, um, use of that?
We, we don't even have an application.
So, and then, in this area then, I could feel like, uh.
You, you housing, pardon, housing.
I don't think I want to put housing there, just because of this, this, these neighbors here. But what about like mini warehouses? Whatever, I think that's allowed. Any, any uses within that is traditional. Yeah, I wouldn't put residential back. But.
Well, I think, and thi- and this is a good time to, um, again, I think revisit, um. For the board, what can go in the business transitional. Zone, right, because I know you were saying you want to do apartments, right, up front, and. And what this board, you know, the town board needs to consider is that, you know, Tom walks out here and, you know, gets into a snowbank, never comes out Santa Claus case. You know, someone else will, someone else will, uh, give, get this property and they can do anything that is business transitional. So we want to look at, is it the correct zoning? So, um.
And also subdivision is something that each talk about is sure, yours.
Um, so I think that's the first thing is, is, um, you know, is everyone comfortable about what's in business transitional? That, that would be a good use of this land. It certainly, it's a, who do I say? It's a, it's an upgrade.
Yeah, right now it's a natural.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's an upgrade no matter what right now. And extend that quality, potential quality along the, the.
Wherever it's, we've set a design precedent with the existing, uh, winery and, uh, conversion.
The little business transitional across this street as well. That was the other project over. And your intent on this concept here is still to keep a sliver of industrial on the west for egress into Northwood.
Cause it's industrial at the corner. It's not getting changed.
Cause that whole northern, whole of our is all industrial along there.
And your point of, and your point about what has happened versus what has not happened on this street. There's, there's still a lot of residential on the street and there's, uh, there's retail support to the residential, you know, with the Dollar General there. It's small, the scale on the whole street is very small. Unlike some of the projects we just saw, which were heavy, you know, heavy industrial.
Right.
So this is still, I mean, under the industrial zone, I could probably put a thirty foot high, uh, office warehouse building there. Um, concrete, you know, just, yeah, concrete wall and.
Yeah. So I think the, the discussions that we've had in terms of the appropriateness of having business transitional along columnar and extending that business transitional makes sense in there. I think we can, we can get behind that. It's the, it's the other part, the, in the back there that we probably would not support transitioning that to industrial.
Yeah. Cause then it becomes a bump of industrial into what is the business transitional zone. Cause then the industrial right now comes down is, that is the back that goes all the way through.
Well, we'll see what happens, you know, next door here, but it, it had the header.
Now hopefully somebody better get in there and, I mean, you, you've set the tone.
Right.
And if you could, if we can get behind this and you continue the tone, then it's only going to be what's going to develop around that corner.
Right.
It'll take a few years when it's going to happen, especially if somebody will get it now. I think, and that's what we want to promote.
Yeah.
We want those guys out there.
Yes, and it's bullet junk.
Sure. No, it's, it's been disaster.
But to the point of what are they and how do they fall into our enforcement program? Is there any notices going to be put out about, you know, putting that area up there? So there's a potential for.
Are you talking about, are you talking about?
I'm talking to those guys.
Eastern side and the one.
Yeah, on the backside of.
North of me where I have those containers. Yeah. Of course, the National Grid proposal for chain link fence or, and barbed wire wasn't a, a great welcome either. I mean, I love these kind of little.
That's still.
They haven't come back in yet.
I've looked at some of those sites and they're horrible.
Oh, there's that's a bit, yes.
But, um, the other, so to address your issue of the, um, subdivision, um, I think we have a subdivision plan, right?
Well, it's under a different, yeah, it's under a different project. If you want to get hold of that, that would be good.
Right there. Alright, so, um, given your comments, it probably wouldn't be necessary to have that loud.
No, correct.
But this is right now, um, finance under one, one. So I've got permission from the lender to separate this parcel. Cause it would be done as a separate development. And that's the purpose for the subdivision, uh, for this three acres. And it would occur just west of the existing drive through, which we now incorporate a gate, minimize or take that out, uh, to eliminate the, uh, truck traffic into the, um,
The, the, the.
Yep.
So this, this road, this driveway essentially.
Correct. And we use the industrial on the left hand side. That's your industrial access right there and then you can circulate around from there.
Yep.
I like keeping the circle line.
I, yeah, I don't.
That controls the lot line, side yard setbacks, or developing another parcel that doesn't jam up against your other property already by default. And then what, what happened?
Right. So I would, I would say removes that subdivision at the top there so that you have one parcel that you know, along this way and then you have your second parcel there plus the industrial access piece. Okay. So you get, that would be your three, three pieces. So am I reading that?
And I think we're gonna, we're gonna this piece.
The driveway.
The driveway, this is staying industrial and it's going to stay with the, um, industrial piece.
But that's, it's, that industrial one is not part of the, what it was part of.
It's a separate lot. Is that part of the?
No, I.
That's part of your current piece, right? Right. So you have to survive that off.
The current, the current site is about five acres. It goes here and there.
That's the right here.
Oh.
The driveway slide on the left hand.
Yeah.
See a neighbor.
This is, this, this driveway goes to this.
Right. So that, that's part of that land. That's part of that parcel.
This, well.
In, in, in your subdivision plan, that piece goes to that.
Yes.
Northwood Business.
Currently it is not, currently it's part of that L shape.
Yes.
Right, correct?
No.
This piece.
The, the.
That piece right there, yes.
No.
Why?
This is not, this is separate. This was a long handle. Yeah.
It's its own parcel.
I'm seeing it as
Yeah, I don't see that either.
The, the business, the strip law is its own. Yeah.
Right. This is a separate.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought is.
It's a separate tax parcel?
I, I think it is, but it can verify it. But the idea is this was something that the planning board wanted me to do, this, this driveway access.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, that makes sense. That you just gotta, you gotta remove that little piece in the property line so that it attaches to north to the, to the office building.
Yes.
Up there.
Right.
Right? So that's contiguous in there because to Jamie's point, it doesn't meet any of the lot size requirements to be its own individual parcel area. So by removing that piece, having it come through, then all of a sudden that gets attached to that. Then you have the, the parcel where.
You plug the server.
Where you've got, you know, the, the new business.
So that, that, uh, the driveway becomes Northwood Business Center.
Yes.
And then this other drive here.
It's industrial.
Stays industrial.
Okay, but I was, there's then, there becomes an issue of the line between the industrial and the business transitional. Because I remember when we did talk about the, uh, putting a barrage here, there was some issue we had in terms of it being on, uh, business transitional versus, um.
But it's all going to be business transitional.
So this, this is already.
That, that's already business transitional.
Or was it the property line? I, I thought there was some issue.
Well, it, it's weird the way that the, the zone line on this property happens. It come, comes down from the upper left. Part of the property line comes down and then it makes this little weird jog.
You can see it right there.
And then goes down. So that's.
Where, where is that?
Right, where your finger is right there.
Then it comes down and it goes down.
Yeah, it comes down and then makes a real room jog and then goes down to columnar and kind of splits the parking.
So we want to, so we want to have it consistent, right?
Correct.
And that's what by doing business, right? Cause your industrials on that side is a line.
So we're going to get rid of this industrial on this side of all.
Yeah. So your business transitional happens here. There's your business transitional line essentially.
Right.
Right? So this is all business transitional. This is industrial right now. This will all now be business transitional. This will remain industrial on the backside here. That cleans up this whole thing. So then where you put your, your, well, I'm just thinking subdivision line.
Yeah.
You want it to be kind of right on this side of the drive aisle, right through here.
Right.
Which is, which is clean, keeps that business transitional. And then you, now you've got a business transitional that does this.
Okay.
On that side.
So the lot line and lot two inside is a transitional.
While you're up there and then the other piece while you're.
But the slot, you can, you can slide in a little bit.
Yeah, the, the one over here is how that's going to be. It's going to be, stay industrial.
This will stay industrial. This will just be a rectangle, but this property line gets removed so that it becomes part of this lot there. So.
It's actually industrial all the way.
It's all the way down. Yeah, they're, they're just a separate lot.
Yeah. Yeah. And this is all industrial here, right? All industrial here.
That what you have is a separate lot.
Okay. I have a question on that.
Where the, where the driveway is?
Yeah.
You're going to have the access to the apartments on the left side. That's a different zone.
It's part of.
Oh, just part of that. So.
Well, yeah, I think.
You mean?
It's part of this.
You could get that.
Oh, I know it. It's, it's part of what is industrial now that goes over your driving line. So if we bring the business transition all over, we need to create a property line there that, then let's not be part of the back piece. That's I get it. I get, I accept that idea.
Who was, uh, Tim Correia was drawing the map, right? So, yeah, I mean, have him call me if he has any questions. But I think he, I think when I heard him when he was here before, he, he understood it.
Yeah.
Yep.
We just want to make sure that now it's.
Well, when I, I bought the, this seems to be separate lots.
Right.
So I bought all these lots. And then, um, I thought that I had this thing all.
Separated? Yeah, it's not.
Cause it was, it was, it was meant for Northwood Office Drive Way.
Yeah.
That's what.
No.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a right way.
We just get to the hat.
Yeah, there's an easement there. It's just not a separate lot.
So are you satisfied if I get it by a truck tonight?
No, say this way.
We're on driveway, so.
They are there.
Yes, I think clean up the subdivision to mute kind of what we were talking about in here. I think if we're showing this thing as business transitional and kind of wrapping that corner as all one in there, I think that's something that this board can get behind.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just, just logistically, it's a kind of a chicken and egg thing, um, as far as can't really prove the subdivision about the zone change. And, you know, the zone change isn't going to happen unless the subdivision happens. So our recommendation is, is going to have something in there about, um, you know, we, we recommended contingent upon, you know, subdivision actually coming back here and being so clear. So, right. Yeah, and vice versa. But, um, because it only makes sense if, if it's, you know.
There was a discussion with, um, the supervisor regarding an overlay. This, is this?
There was.
Well, I get it with.
Oh, okay.
So is that an overlay district? Is that a possibility instead of the zone change?
Well.
This is a mixed use.
I don't know.
There wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be.
What the conversation, I don't know what the conversation is.
No, I told him what I want to do. And he said, well, maybe instead of the zone change, you could do overlay district or something. I mean, I just. Throw it out.
We have only for outside.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is.
I'm sure. We're doing a lot, business transition, we're doing business transition. Pick up that as business traditional. Try this lot as part of this industrial lot and have the other lot.
I want you under that.
But if we get paid, we get paid to work here, so it's free.
Let me just, I think I have mine.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll see what the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Thank you.
You got to get all this.
Um, uh, you know, it's, again, it's a chicken and egg thing because the subdivision, um.
I'm going to do these drawings.
No, yeah, it's, this is
Right.
Because there's timeline on the. Google on the.
Gotcha.
Um, recommendation.
Alright, so nineteen, I'll get back on the nineteen. Alright, next up we got auto service and sales.
Yeah.
Harry Horace, Harry Horace Science Park. Sulo Coromah will be the tenant, um, of the property.
Yeah.
So the property is located at six two hundred, uh, Thompson Road. The burned area is directly across the street from this. Uh, so what, what I'm showing here is existing site. Um, and I've hatched out areas of where we're looking to reduce some of the pavement. I know there's a lot of pavement that goes out to the, the sidewalk and the curb. So, so basically, um, Sulo will be using the, the, the existing building as it is. It was a auto repair shop. And that's what he's proposing to do at the same site along with, um, a, a small auto sale. So like a few. Then the code, the code allows a couple spaces for auto sales. So that's basically the scope is, is to reuse the building as is. Uh, clean up the site and conduct his business there. So I think if you go to the next. Uh, so the site plan does show, um, you know, additional landscaping, um. Uh, we have nine parking spaces, um, six for the use and then three for, um, you know, what could be, uh, the sales portion of it. Uh, I think that's, that's pretty much what we're proposing.
Autifigations to the building?
No, the building has been, was previously an auto dealership or, uh, auto repair. So it's already set up for that.
State lighting.
Um.
Is this, is this industrial?
I think it's business.
It's business.
Um, I don't, I don't remember if there's lights out there. Um, but, uh, we can, we can look at what exists in logging. There's, there's probably some floodlights on the building, but.
Yeah, it's signage too.
Um, I think he does want to put signage up. I don't know if he wants to do it with this application. If he could do it under a separate application, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the old one has the old Syracuse Auto Roots.
Oh, is it?
Sign up on there. Yeah. It's probably a little big.
Yeah, with the, with the light, we just want to make sure we're bringing up to constant.
Okay.
And for all the lighting.
Yeah, okay.
It's a clean structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The modern kind of clean.
As part of the project, you said the, the, removing some of the, the pavement is to reduce the width of the ginormous curb cuts on it.
Yeah. And if you can, if you scroll up a little bit.
Wrong way.
The wrong way.
Yep.
Um, yeah. So here's Thompson Road. There's new sidewalk there and they, they do have these ginormous curb cuts. So I, I think we just kind of, kind of take out some of that asphalt and, you know, define those.
And screening up that right, that south side there on the right there to the neighbors.
Yeah.
Do you have curbing?
Um, there is no existing curbing on there.
But how about proposed where you're, you're just going to cut the asphalt and put.
Yeah, yeah.
No, usually you always curb off the road and.
Yeah, it's curved from the road back to the inside, going or at least to the first stall. So like in my, I would expect that this is, this Thompson Road state road. So they're going to probably acquire it.
You're going to need a highway work, work network with them. Definitely think they're going to want to change the radius of the driveways.
Well, they, I mean, it looks like they put in new sidewalks. It's all brand new and it's all, I mean, they paved right up to the.
They have a huge, and they made a huge curve cutting, and those aren't their cuts, so they dropped.
But they matched the existing driveway.
Right, so they came, they came and matched it without. Going after them when they should have gone after them to produce it, so. I would curious what they say if they wanna have to.
Yeah, so they're saying we, we did reach out to them, driveway should have a radius for turning movements and better aligned center with the curb lines. Southern driveway has no radius and the ingress side has drop curb that leads into grass, vehicles will turn in where they see drop curb and. Curb and have to maneuver around the grass corner. Uh, another option you presented was.
So that's, that's backwards, that is, that's a bad, that's all from the concrete, that's the state for you, thanks.
He said one option could be to create separate one-way driveways, reducing the driveway widths for additional green space, but still allow. Um, for easy sight circulation for trailers. Should be considered also.
But then it goes against their thing about you gotta have the driveway as wide as their existing curb cuts instead of bringing their curb cuts in. To make it.
Right.
It's with your snowshells too.
Yeah.
So yeah, in terms of curbing, you're, sorry, I took, I forgot what I got. But, bring the, the curbing in.
Okay.
You know, the island in the middle, you'll wanna, you know, attach to the curb, but bring. Around there and then the left side, where you get in, bring it at least back.
Go here, then.
And so it'll go back to the inside of the first stall, you know, into that corner.
Yeah.
In there.
Well, and I would, I would almost wanna propose to the DOT. To use that curbing instead of having to redo all that sidewalk and reset that, the curb cuts for them. Because right now it sounds like they're asking, they're asking for all of this to be redone. This, this is the drop curb from here to here, the same goes from here to here on that side.
Yeah, and the left side, it seems like it goes way almost off the, almost.
Oh, yeah.
Goes way over the.
Yeah, cause here's the edge of the existing asphalt, so it goes right to here, yeah.
But they want you, they would have you pull it forward, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that, is that, I haven't seen their comments.
I think you should, they haven't provided official comments, I think you should coordinate with them for the process.
You know what?
Does that one?
I would actually be okay eliminating. Is it necessary to have both for this small lot?
So that was mentioned too, um, and Jeff commented on that, and he said. If one of the driveways is removed, ideally the curb and sidewalk should be replaced, given the scope of site work, this may be unreasonable.
Right.
He doesn't have a strong preference on which driveway is closed, the north driveway has a wider curb cut and more onsite conflicts. And exiting left side additional, additional lane to cross opposed to the south driveway. We just got this email from him today at three thirty this afternoon, so we're just kinda reading it.
To, to me, it's a, it's a financial thing for you, and the goal is not to burn you unnecessarily with, you know, just throwing money at things. Make it work right and make people not jump curves and, or, oh, I can cut the curb because the state put the curb in the wrong, you know, in a terrible, so then they're digging up your lawn. Crossing it, that's stupid too, so if you can bring your curb gracefully tight-hauling that down, you don't have to affect them as much, maybe that's the answer, it's more about. I mean, there's gotta be a better solution, the DOT won't come up with the right answer.
Right.
Yeah, alright, I can, I can coordinate with Jeff a little bit on those comments and come up with some ideas and how to make that economically work.
I trust you.
Uh, Terry, on this system operating as a personal garage.
Well, right now it's vacant, um, and the owner has some vehicles parked there, and they're gonna be remove those when. Um, Roma takes over the lease on it.
Do you know how long it's been vacant?
One year, do you know how long?
Like months, years?
I think it's been years, yeah.
I don't think it's been that long.
No, okay.
I think horse needs to be in there.
Yeah.
They had a detailing operation.
Oh, okay, alright, so it's, it's been active.
You think it's been active, Doug, for a while?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Is there a use change?
Well, I mean, I, I, in a, in a, in a business zone. A commercial garage needs a, um, specific usage permit, so, I just wanted like a long, is there, has it been there like for decades? And then, well, how it got there, um. I, I mean, I'm not trying to be a burden son.
Yeah, yes.
If we can show that it's been existed.
Would that still be valid or?
Well, I don't even know if they ever, if they have one, it was, we should look, but that specific. Part of the code didn't come into effect until like two thousand and eight, so they may have been there before then.
Right.
We'll see if we can find.
Cause time flies when you have.
Anything else on these site?
I mean, this guy's been a site that has garnered complaints for the way that it's looked. So what, what Terry's proposing is, is huge.
And you've got your ivy trees and.
They got the screen on the side, so that'll actually break that visual rhythm down as you're heading.
We've had clothes officers out there. You know, there were rocks all over the place.
Yeah, they had the Boulder program on track for a while, yeah.
The other thing that I'm gonna wanna make sure that's, that's on here is. You know, there's a rain shed and stuff in the back.
Okay.
So there, right, but there should be a note on here that their, their outdoor storage material or anything will not be. Allowed.
Okay, so everything's on inside, yeah, inside.
Inside, you know, I mean, I, I look at the existing, the photo that's in here, but we have a lot of problems. Where at least, you know, suddenly the rates.
Everything starts kind of.
Showing up all in the building and a lot of stuff in there.
Uh, what, yeah, what, what is the business gonna be?
So it's.
Minimum auto. Yes, so, uh, sales and cer- and service or, or service of the vehicles you're selling? Yeah, I mean, sales and services, you know, just more sale and sales.
Can you talk about the parking spaces and how that breaks down with the sales and the service vehicles?
Um, so there's, we need six for the service and three for sales, so. You know, we, and they're just scattered throughout, and I'm most assuming that the ones probably towards the street would be someplace where you put.
I mean, just minimal, three parking is one motive you could require.
Yeah.
I said sale person.
I, I think they have to be a guy or something.
Do they need to identify, okay, with signage?
Well, there. If you can look at the, the vehicle sales.
DMV's gonna wanna know which ones are.
We have specific requirements.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, yep. Under, you know, a commercial garage, the vehicle sales. And how many spaces you need and how they can be, uh, displayed and how many you can have and.
It's code section one ninety-two eighty-six.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Or thank you.
And then last up, we have tier two cultivation.
Hello again. My name is John, I'm sat with Nacirel Consulting, um, I'm here representing Golden Log. With me tonight is Amanda Kilrow, uh, she's attending on Zoom. Uh, it's for the proposed repurposing of the existing warehouse facility at forty fifty-four slash forty. Uh, forty-eight New Court Avenue, um. The primary work that's gonna be done here is all interior renovations, everything shown is existing conditions, there's not really any slight improvements intended. There are a few non-conforming, um, parts of the parcel. Including, uh, by code or part forty-three parking spots, there's twenty-six currently on the property. So you can see it's pretty maxed out with pavement and parking as it is, there's not a lot of room to improve that. Um, setbacks in this area, uh, zone industrial, the minimum required setback is thirty-five feet. It's currently sitting at thirty-one point nine with the neighboring, uh, proper, or the neighboring buildings averaging at thirty point eight feet setback. Side setbacks, thirty-two minimum required total, uh, we have a three point three. On the east side of the building and an eight point one on the west side of the building. And a rear setback of forty feet minimum, and we are meeting, uh, an eleven point two foot setback. Along the backside of the property. Additionally, uh, property is only allowed the eighty percent lot coverage maximum, it's currently sitting at ninety-nine point one. In existing conditions, and building coverage maximum of fifty percent, it's at fifty-seven percent.
Change the building.
Change it.
Yeah. There'll be no signage included, uh, with this building, it'll just be essentially just the address.
Technically has two front, I think, did you call it a rear yard?
Called it a rear yard, yes, it does have the two front, um, the Newport Drive as well as the. Eastport Drive.
What is that?
What was its prior use?
Prior use, it's, was recently the mid-state spring manufacturing.
What is the space to the, on the west side of the building, between the property line of the building?
On this side here?
Yeah.
So the property line actually, um. This is currently paved, I believe, being used by, um, this building. This parking, it's separated by a strip of grass that goes between two here.
Small circle, so what, what's right up against your building, but nobody drives back?
You can't get back.
No, it's, it's, I believe primarily used, it's just like a pedestrian walkway, it's asphalt paved at the moment.
You had mentioned forty-three required spaces, we, you know, um, seventy-four required spaces. I think this is other commercials, since it didn't really fit into any of the.
Okay. Let's take it by part.
So, can you say that number again?
Um, we had come up with seventy-four required parking spaces if you're using the other commercial.
And there's how many?
Eighteen.
Six.
Twenty-six.
I got twenty-six.
How many employees, I mean, like, twenty-six in all of them.
Uh, Amanda, can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, hi, hi guys, my name's Amanda Kilrow, I'm the attorney for, the licensing, uh, and regulatory attorney for Golden Log. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll start with, um, ten employees, but hope to get up to, to, um, twenty over. Um, the first, the first and second year of operations.
So maybe even this manufacturing, it must have been very underpermed. It's, it's one of those, you know, we.
Or was it defined as something everywhere in this parking?
Remember, even those buildings, those other buildings we did up, this is that famous New Court area, and then they're all like this.
Yeah, there's not, there's no parking.
You can't get back, you have a backup, unless you're on the street, you can't get in, um.
Look, looking back at the store, just what you can see, you know, there's always been a couple of spare spots in this primary parking area. Very rarely do I come across vehicles parked in this rear area, the primary entrance is up here with another window here.
So you, you're putting car park.
Not here, they, that count, it doesn't include that truck area.
No, just to the side of that, the work. Right, these, these couple of spots that are here.
Three, four, yeah.
So those are again, because you, you typically not allowed to pack out in the street. A lot of back, and also again, it's a non.
Again, everything I, in this whole corridor is non-conforming and people back in and there's no parking. There's no parking here, there's probably half of the.
Um, but, um, the use, it's described as indoor horticulture operation, is that? Code for, is it related to cannabis by, in any way?
Yes.
It is, it is.
Amanda.
Yeah, so we were awarded, oh, sorry. Um, uh, yes, we were awarded one of the twenty, um, tier two cultivation licenses issued by OCM. Um, in the licensing round this past December, so the tier two license. Um, allows you to cultivate up to twelve thousand five hundred square feet of canopy space. Um, and in this twenty-two thousand foot facility.
Yeah, if you look at the, the floor plans that are in there.
Yeah.
There's, there's office space, there's.
You can see the operation and.
That's right.
Shipping, there's.
But does our, does our cannabis ordinance even apply? This is not a dispensary, it's mainly manufacturing, there's no onsite, onsite.
Yeah, no.
Cultivation and manufacturing.
There's no manufacturing onsite, would just be cultivation, uh, pro- manufacturing is separate, a separate license type.
So how many, what's the truck delivery export operations like here?
So we'll use, um, so, um, most of our transport, sorry, all of our transport vehicles will be one of those little Ford Sprinters. So, we'll have, um, you know. Uh, delivery trucks come to, um, you know, drop off supplies, whether that's packaging materials, things like that, and then also to take the cannabis. Um, directly to the, to the dispensaries, and so that, those will all be done during business hours between nine and five. And they all have to be scheduled in advance, so we won't have situations where there's, um, you know, pileup of, of vehicles coming. Coming to load or unload at any given time.
Packaging, so if you're manufacturing, packaging, then.
I'm assuming you're operating all building lighting, we talked about that, but.
Uh, we hadn't discussed it, there's currently wall packs on the outside with a couple of lights above.
Yeah.
Entrance doors.
Security, is there a security program part, as part of this upgrades to the building?
Uh, Amanda, do we have any?
Yeah, so we, um, so we'll comply with, um, you know, the state of New York, like best, best standard practices for security. And so that is, um, cameras that will operate twenty-four seven, and they are at every entrance and exit. They have to have twenty feet visibility, we also have cameras inside the facility, wherever cannabis is stored or located. And, and the path that the cannabis would follow, um, in addition to the cameras, um, we also have every, um, every door. As, um, as card access, so it can only be accessed by employees or visit, visitors who, um, are accompanied by employees. So we'll also have a security guard onsite during business hours, and the cameras will run, um, when the facility's closed at night.
But, it's just one thing to take a look at with the lighting, there's a security camera lighting requirements in the vicinity, that, that's come up before.
Yeah, they require more than, than a standard code. And then it's.
Yeah, we'll have, and we'll have floodlights in the parking lot, that's like pretty standard for all of our, for, um. You know, I thi- I think the visibility is very important, right, because, because there's no point in having the cameras if the cameras can't, if there's no light to, for them to be able to capture.
It's, it's a contradiction to our code.
It is, it spills over.
Yes, you gotta, you gotta look at the.
I see, I see.
Right.
Yeah, and then.
Okay, I see, I see.
Go back to the site, the building lighting being wall packed, with those old wall packs are just lights on the walls, floodlight out, and I say, hey, look, we got floodlights.
Yeah.
We don't wanna see floodlights like that, and then they cut offs, and then there's plenty of pictures out there that again, you get a tunnel light out of and meets the code. For the state and us at the edge of the property by looking at what the cut offs are on those fixtures.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Again, India.
Yes.
Yep, cut sheets.
Bobby lighting guy involved, or one of those guys.
Yep.
Is there any chance of controlling those access points? Other? Like the street access, it's pretty uncontrolled.
Oh, as far as just like the wide open, uh, I, we could talk to, maybe we could talk about potentially reducing this parking area. Up here, reducing just the one driveway access.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
You did do that with B C storage, right? That turned out really nice, just down the road. But you're, you're talking about.
Yeah, it would cut it down, yeah, you would rework this front here so you get the, uh, driveway and you got parking there, it's double loading, you could cut this out, right, like. Cause that's, that's like, that's a.
And then the next guy, the guy from the next guy that came in with warehousing. With B C storage, that was second. Was it totally just like this? Right?
Yeah, there are three doors down, B C's two doors down from there.
As in the one next door to B C, the guy did something.
Yeah.
And, and we would need to take a look at it, I see.
Yeah.
Not entirely certain that this door is AKA accessible. Not entirely certain that this door is AKA accessible.
Let's let's talk about, same way with that door where your finger was right there.
Yeah.
Is that just a man door or is that product coming on your back of the truck up to or?
It's just a man door. There is an overhead door here.
Yeah.
Uh as well as one here.
So we can look at that strip zone there and out to the road there and have a driveway and and the back out thing potentially and look at the the whole frontage piece there.
That would reduce the our parking by three with the, or be all right with that production.
I'm saying, but can you leave the three and and just get an element there that's green that is aligned with the, see the slot of space almost like a driveline plane? You've got the parking on the left side. You've got the drive, yeah, right, right there. You got the first row parking, then you got the driveway, then you got a row of parking.
Yeah.
And so then be behind that row parking to the building, it's sort of no man's land.
Yeah, I believe this would be um, uh Amanda, we could talk about what the the loading and unloading process would be. I'm not sure if they would be using this.
That's that that was my question. It's not a loading, a real loading dock on the bottom of the page. I thought there was just a man door. I think it goes back into that or.
Sorry, I I did misunderstand that. Yeah, there is a man door here. That's what this concrete pad here is. There is an overhead loading dock here as well, yeah.
So there is, right, and and Matt may be able to tell us a little bit more. There is a very similar facility at O N X, larger. But I don't know how much you know about when once they moved in. I mean, I I toured it. I I I've looked at it. Security is a big issue. Power draws are a big issue. Um you wouldn't even know it's there. But I don't think there's a lot of traffic in that.
It's a real deal.
I mean, you could probably tell us more.
Yeah, no, I mean, just just like I said, I mean, that that facility is significantly larger than this one, but you you don't know it's there. There's, you know, it's a. A cultivation operation. Yeah, it's a, yeah, today's day and age is part of part of the world.
Which right next to the FedEx and.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of parking there.
Fans or the other stuff.
I guess part of what we would look at is understanding, yeah, we're having pre-existing non-conformity. On several things and process.
Stuff is stuff gonna be added to the.
Process to keep us moving forward for this huge permit.
We have a tier.
Do we? Get recognition. Similar to when I was here last time on.
So um you know what, I I think we need to look at that part of the code of intensity of use. That that possibly um states that if that if there is a current non-conformity in parking and the intensity of use is not changed from prior use. Then you can keep what you got.
Yeah.
It's it's not, it's it's not the same as pre-existing non-conforming, but it's a it's a different finding. So I think we should look at that change of intensity of use section.
Eric, any other comments? I mean.
We talked about landscaping, country, if we could. Buy some more space there, street trees, maybe plus up some data, so it's lighting and have these things.
They just cultivate area is on twelve thousand. So that's only half of it.
Landscape offer on that strip that runs in between there. I don't know if they want to.
It's a piece of the package.
Yeah, but there's that tiny little strip of green, green on the on the age west. Side of the building, if that, you know, from pop corner, bottom corner of that side, if that gets removed and becomes green in there, I mean. You don't really planting.
Yeah, it's 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 pretty, it's pretty tight here.
It's pretty bad. There's a.
I don't think it's that green really.
The neighbors.
But trees.
The neighbors got trees.
I mean, they're not, I mean, they're not showing on that.
Trick is it's the. It's the northwest side.
That really is.
I think a lot of success there.
Um okay, and then obviously what I was more or did you hear, take a look at it? I guess we'll get your comments.
Yeah, yeah, quick comment should be.
Okay.
What about other additional equipment for those growing, outside air fans, ventilation units on the roof, are there more rooftop things being added?
I know, I know typically they have um odor and waste control lines that they have to put together. Hopefully we can, Amanda, we have that to provide for them.
Let's improvise those, absolutely, yeah.
If you're adding anything to the outside of this building.
Okay.
And then is it really have enough power for your for the lighting and power consumption for this meeting?
Yeah, it's uh six hundred amps right now. It's capable of eight hundred, three phase. So my understanding, it's plenty.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to working with you all.
Yeah. So did you see the um real quick on cannabis growing facilities uh worthquading California today?
Yeah.
The one which the one that was seven point worth, like thirty miles offshore, northern California. Or it got shit 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 really bad, ripped split, you know, a lot of some damage. Of course, you know, they always have the ridiculous camera in the store with stuff falling off the shelves. It's called the other studio shot on. And B C news was was a cannabis growing facility with the camera, that's all the play.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. No, Gaddy got it.
I gotta take care of the police now.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. We'll see you again.
Appreciate it.